...to order tonight, this is the full Board of Education for the school district of Waukesha on October 12th, 2016. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll start a meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, have we been properly posted with the media?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Starting off tonight, we are going to have bright lights, always the best part of the meeting, and this is the first one this year. So tonight, we have Joe Jenna from Waukesha West High School that's going to do a presentation on the Aquatics Roots Program along with some of his students. Welcome, Joe.
I'm pulling this up on AirPlay. This is Will Graham.
Hi. All right, so I think it was several years ago, the last time I stood up here and presented the introduction of aquatic roots, and when we were burdened the greenhouse into a 1,500-gallon aquaponics system. There's a lot of things that have changed since then. There's a lot of education that has happened. It's remarkable, I was just reminiscing, it's been five years now that we've been up and running, and it doesn't seem like it. So, it's been quite a project. Some of the different things that are going on right now, we have added what we refer to, what we affectionately refer to as the We Know Science Group, and it started out last year with one of my counterparts at North bringing over some of her students. Last year, it was the We Know Science, and then this year, it has changed into the We Knows, because now we've incorporated South. And again, one of my counterparts over at South is bringing some of his students over, they come over once a month. We do activities in the greenhouse, we're extending the learning opportunities out to both North and South. And so, from North, Nicole Hunter-Holzner, and then from South, Jake Forystack are the two teachers. That's been, it's been a great once-a-month activity, and I'm really glad to see that expanding out to South again this year. Eighth-hour science class that I teach, being a teacher, being a special-needs teacher, sometimes we struggle with identifying things in the curriculum that are meaningful to some of our students. In my eighth-hour science class, having the flexibility, it really opens it up. There's a lot of hands-on activities that we can do with the kids, and I think that it really makes a big difference in their lives, just as far as the homework concept, you know, things that they do, and we'll be able to talk about that here in a second. Different things that we learn, some of the kids, or some of the things that they learn in there, we're talking about composting, we're talking about the difference between aquaculture, fish farming, and aquaponics, comparing that to traditional farming. We're continuing with our tomato and pepper plant sale. We get into the nitrogen cycle, that's a tough one to teach in chemistry classes, you know, and yet, we break it down in a way that it's meaningful for our students in the greenhouse. We've got a live, you know, actual working greenhouse right there where we can do some of this, and they can see how it applies. The water testing, the day-to-day operations, and then the presentations, we're here talking about things. And I'm going to talk a little bit about one of the other presentations that my students did that did so well. So, I'm going to let Will talk at this point about the science class and his experiences.
I'm in the eighth-hour science class. I am a student aide, and I help out with the day-to-day operations and, you know, the ID kids, and it really, I get to help out, and it makes me feel good, you know, feel good that I'm helping. And I'm learning stuff, it's, and I've been in this probably like about two years now, and I'm still learning, it's an excellent experience. And every day, what we do, another presentation towards the, in the lunchroom, so we could use the food that they have, and we'll put that into our compost bin, and we'll compost that, and then we'll use shredded paper from the office as well, as another resource.
Really?
And just mix it all up and, you know, make it really rich nutrients of soil, and it's really nice to be part of this. I really enjoy it. It's, I think it's one of the best classes and best highlights of my day, to be honest.
Will is serving in the role of, like he said, a student aide, where he's a mentor to a lot of the kids and helps them in the class. So, he's really embraced that role, and I am extremely proud of Will, the transformation that he has made over the course of last year, and so much so that I invited him here to present.
Great.
All right, Will is also a part of this aquaponics club, so this is a picture from last year. We started the aquaponics club last year, we meet, once we get things up and running, we meet twice a month, so every other week on Wednesdays. It's pretty nice, we've got about seven or eight new kids that have emailed me this year. I think we're, I think we're starting to reach out to a few more of the mainstream students, and I'm really excited to be working with them. It's, you know, they bring a different energy level, you know, and they challenge me in a completely different way than what I'm used to, and so that's, that's good for me, getting me to step out of my comfort zone a little bit, too. Two other classes that are involved, Jaclyn Jordan, one of our family consumer science teachers, has been, she brought down four of her classes, her foods classes, and we went through the process of planting seeds, and they're growing some Aunt May's bib right now, and in about another six weeks, they're going to harvest that lettuce, they're going to take it back up to the lab, and they're going to prepare a meal with that. Another teacher, Jeff White, brings his Live and Learn class, which-
I was a part of last year, it was a really nice class as well.
And so, that's how Will really got connected with me in the greenhouse, and they come in every Wednesday, and their students, who also are some of our students with special needs, they operate as mentors for some of the other kids. So, we have students who aren't necessarily used to being put in a mentor role, and they are, and it's remarkable what happens when we do that. We still continue with our tomato and pepper plant sale that initially started out as our, as our primary fundraising for the greenhouse, so we continue doing that every year, and this picture kind of shows a little bit of how crowded that greenhouse gets when we do our tomato and pepper plant sale. Power outage last year, that was a scary time. We had a tree that fell on a power line, and so, myself and one of the students from the aquaponics club, we're trying to figure out what we're going to do, and this was during the day, class was going on, we're sitting around and we're brainstorming as that, as the tank is starting to fill up, the water's starting to settle down, and we have no aeration in there, the water's not moving. So, what we ended up doing is hopping in the truck and running down the Generac and figuratively knocking on the door. Generac was kind enough that within about 20 minutes, we were out the back door with the portable generator.
Oh, wow.
And brought it back to West. We got everything plugged in, we got our pumps running, I called the gentleman back the next day to let him know I was coming back after school to return it, and he ended up telling us to keep it, and so they donated it to us. So, there, there are a lot of people that I need to thank, and I'm not even sure everyone to correctly thank, but we were able to get the backup generator, I'm sorry, we were able to get the greenhouse hooked up to the backup generator when they did that work this summer. So, if any of you, I think Mr. Gray may have been involved in that, I know that Glenn Norder was, Ryan, Pat for sure, anybody who was involved with that, I want to thank them very much for that. That's nice peace of mind now, having the greenhouse on that backup generator. Spring City Garden Club has been a tremendous resource for us, the donations, they have donated a significant amount of money each of the last three years. To repay that kindness, one of the things that we have done the last two years is the spring garden sale that they have over at the EB Shirts Building. Myself and some of my students have gone to that, and we help take plants out, you know, anything that they need, they need things set up, cleaned up, we help out with that just as repaying the kindness. So, that bridges that gap back to the community, which is tremendous. I do have a short little clip here, hopefully this will come up, of one of our students presenting, and the remarkable thing about this is this is in front of about 80 ladies. I hope the audio is going to work here.
On down, little trees and woods, and we did, on the side come up, the tree in a big world.
So, what Grace is explaining to them is the difference between aquaponics and soil, and how they grow, and water.
He gives water. Number one, with poop, and down in the water, little trees, and with the top of the tree, the sun, the tree grow.
And this is some of my students, again, you see Gracie there, at the EB Shirts Building, helping out with one of the sales. The young lady on the left is Emma McBride, and she is the president of the aquaponics club. So, that's where she comes in. Derek Crowe and Rainie Ruiz. This is a group of students that we took, that I took to present in front of those 80 ladies, and so, it was just a very nice picture, you can get an idea of some of the students that I brought with me, and again, getting them, I mean, this is intimidating for me, speaking in front of the school board, for my students in front of 80 strangers, I cannot tell you how proud I was of them, and how well they did. It was tremendous. Again, back to the, oh, and we lost our AirPlay. You know what, I'll just go ahead and I'll just finish up here. One of the other things is the food pantry. We have donated fish to the food pantry on a couple of different occasions now. Previously, in our plans, we wanted to try and get every penny that we could to try and keep the project going, but because of the donations from the Spring City Garden Club and some of the money that we've been able to raise through our tomato and pepper plant sale, it hasn't been that critical for us. So, we've been able to turn around and donate things back to the food pantry, and so, again, just keeping that whole community aspect going. Then the last thing, you guys thankfully and very graciously approved a $10,000 donation that we got from an anonymous donor, and so, that's the, kind of the culminating thing here, again, just making light of that $10,000 donation, and the future plans that that may open up for us. I know that I've been in conversation with a few people around the school district to see if there's something that we can do to maybe expand the greenhouse out, trying to create more classroom space in there so that we can get more students in there. We have North and South coming over for the We Know Science Group. Ultimately, I think it'd be really a great step if we were to expand it out and be able to have students from the middle schools, elementary schools, coming on over for in-school district field trips. That $10,000 donation really helped us to take a step in that direction and get some of those conversations going. My presentation, and Will, thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for having me.
And I hope I didn't go over too long, I know I'd get a little-
This is perfect. Are there any questions, Mr. Baumgart?
More, excuse me, more comment than question. Joe, you know I've been over there a couple of times and saw that the beginning of this process, five years ago, you sure about that? Anyway, I think you've just shed a different light on it to me tonight. I periodically talk about the gems we have in the district, and we, sometimes we forget where they are. And initially, you know, I viewed that as an aqua, aquatic, you know the word, what it was, it was kind of an interesting thing. How you have used that in an educational situation with your special-needs kids is amazing to me, and I really want to congratulate you for that.
Mr. McCaffrey.
It's a great program, I love it, you know, I follow it, but do you have any interaction with the UW Extension? Because they have that gardening, the Master Gardener certificate actually is offered through that.
We, I was in contact, as part of this, when we were setting it up, I was very, very ambitious, initially wanted to have a community garden back behind West, too. So, I was in touch with the Master Gardeners at the UW Extension to see if we could get that going. And the greenhouse itself ended up consuming so much of my time, because so much of it is above and beyond and outside of the school day, that I couldn't invest any more time. I wanted to make sure this was done and done well, so I had to kind of back off on that, but I did connect with them. However, Jim Held was a tremendous resource for me when it came to the aquaculture and the aquaponics, and he was with the UW Extension at that time. Actually, that's a little bit of an understatement to say that he was a tremendous-
Mrs. Brusink.
What a phenomenal experience our kids are having there, it's just terrific. And what is the difference between, let's say, vegetables grown in water and vegetables grown in soil?
Well, obviously, the growing medium is a big one. So, I could talk the rest of the night about this, unfortunately. There's, whatever's in the soil is in the soil.
Yes.
And you have to worry about crop rotation, if you deplete certain energy, or, sorry, certain minerals that are there, the nutrients that's there. Composting, which is what we're doing, is another way of replacing it back in the soil. So, with the soil, there's a lot of different ways that you can replace that nutrient, and nature does it naturally, for the most part, if we don't interfere too much. With an aquaponic system, when you're growing it in water, when you're growing plants in water, there's really two different directions you can go in. You can go with aqua hydroponics, but then you have to introduce the chemicals, you have to introduce the nutrients, and it's not organic the way that organic was intended to be, because you are adding chemicals, and those chemicals have, depending upon your view on this, you know, they have an impact on the end product. With aquaponics, we feed the fish and the fish feed the plants.
Oh, interesting.
So, that keeps it even, to me, even more as organic as organic was intended, because if we start introducing chemicals to the fish, the fish are not going to survive. So, when it comes to disease, when you're outside, if you're growing things in soil, you can apply foliar chemicals, and you can get rid of different, you know, different infestations. In the aquaponic system, we can't. We spray chemicals on those plants, it's going to kill the fish, and the whole system's going to crash. But we introduce, when we have an infestation, we introduce sometimes-
Can I time in on this?
Absolutely.
We had this white fly infestation at one point, it was all over the plants, I mean, I'm talking about these tiny, tiny, small flies, millions of them, and the only way we had to get rid of them was bringing, introducing ladybugs. You know, and just imagine, tons and tons of ladybugs, you know, eating these white flies, it was-
You don't eat them all overnight. So, it took a long time to get rid of the white fly infestation that we had.
The thing about the white fly infestation is it, it may have just been in the greenhouse, but I can say it also spread throughout other parts of the building as well.
Really?
It was in the art room, it was everywhere.
Mrs. Reinacek.
But you don't know that that white fly didn't come from someone else's plant from the art room in the first place, right? Teachers bring in plants from their home, I mean, I have a green thumb outside, but as soon as I bring a plant inside, something kills it, and it's-
Right. There are, there are so many different ways that any of those insects can get inside that greenhouse. We don't have the environmental controls a lot of the commercial places have. The big commercial operations, you come in and you have to change your clothes, change your shoes, put on a white suit or something, or you have to go through sterilization station to enter in to the greenhouse, and then what that does is it gets rid of any white flies, any infestation, any eggs, that's another one, just walking around outside. So, if I'm walking around outside, I come in the building, I go inside, I may have just brought egg, you know, from any number of insects into the greenhouse. That's, I mean, that's a whole nother level when we're talking environmental controls like that. It's pretty significant.
Will, when you were talking about composting, so are there worms that are breaking down the paper from the office and the food from the cafeteria?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, the Burma compost, when we introduced worms, the other day, in fact, we took a shovel and we went in and turned it all over, you know, to get all the nutrients and hair to help decompose, and we, going in a little deeper, you see all these worms in there, and worms, you don't have to worry about, you know, adding in more worms, they just multiply and multiply and multiply, and really, they're like, there's worms in there, they eat everything. Yeah.
Interesting, interesting. Ask another question.
Yes, Mrs. Brusink.
I'd ask you another question. What classes do you teach? What are the names of the classes that you teach?
The science class?
Yeah.
It's just the, the eighth-hour science class that I teach for students with special needs. The other classes, and I'm not sure if this is what you're asking, I teach two math intervention classes.
Oh, okay, so, okay, thank you.
Just a quick question for you, Will. This is your second year, you say this is one of your favorite parts of the day. What are some of the things that you've taken away as you, being an aide and as you're teaching others about this? What have you, what are some things perhaps that you've learned by being an aide and teaching others about this wonderful, these wonderful cycles? Because usually, it's one thing to learn about it, but it's another to teach others and to really help get things going, and I just didn't know if you had some comment on that. And that's okay, Will.
He enjoys it.
Mr. O'Brien, yes.
Well, one thing, Will, I'll say is you have a tremendous speaking voice. I mean, that's about, that's about 10 times better than any board member here, so keep working on that, except for Ms. Madden, of course.
Radio announcement quality.
Very clear, very precise, excellent, so.
I can say one thing, I don't want to get into too much of the past, but the change in Will in the last year, and the responsibility, the enthusiasm that he comes into the class with, the questions that he asks me, there are a lot of questions that he asks me related to this topic, and Will is a very, very bright young man, and he comes up with some questions that I can't answer. There are many times where I have to say to him, you know what, Will, I don't know, but let's find out, let's see if we can find the answer to that question. He is challenging me as well, and the biggest thing for me with Will is the responsibility and transferring. I'm not, I'm not trying to take the science class and take credit for this, but overall, his grades are so much better this year than they were last year, his responsibility, you know, the way he acts around the building and everything, and I see Will carrying himself in a much, much different way, and it is just remarkable. And like I said, so much to the point that I brought him here to present with me tonight, that's how highly I think of him.
Mrs. Reinacek.
Will, do you, what grade are you at again?
I'm a senior.
You're a senior, okay. So, do you see yourself going down this path? Do you see yourself doing something in this field because you've been introduced to it?
I mean, probably not in the same field, I'm looking to go Army, but I definitely like composting, I want to, it's something I would consider definitely doing, and so, mixing chemicals and having that runoff going to rivers and stuff, I want to keep everything so friendly.
So, as a hobby, you'll have a garden or something someday?
Yes, ma'am.
Greg.
Will, I just want to thank you for the work you do and for the role model you are for the other students in your building. It's the first time I've heard about this program, and I'm really impressed, and you're certainly one of the many bright lights in the district, so keep up the good work, buddy.
Thank you.
And you can see, you can see Mr. Jenna's gratitude that he has for you being in his class, helping, helping with everything. So, thanks for all your help, Will. Mr. Jenna, I can't believe five years have already gone by, keep up the good work, keep up the focus on the program, and obviously, you're so focused on the students and the benefit of the students and how this can really help bring those children out. Thank you for, for being the champion of this program, appreciate it very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Moving on, this evening, we do not have any recognitions, but we do have our student representatives back for the first time this year. Tonight, we have Anna Bedla-
Bedlov.
Bedlov, and Jared Estes, joining us from Waukesha North High School. Welcome.
Hi, as you know, I'm Anna, and this is Jared, and we're going to run you through some highlights from the end of last school year and the beginning of this year.
Okay, so first, for sports and stuff, so, our cross-country teams are hoping to bring runners back to state. The whole guys team went last year, and a girl named Anna Martin went this year, and the teams are doing really well as a total and individually, people are placing very high, and we're very proud of them.
The swim and dive team for girls is in the fall season, and we placed second at the North Star Invite and third at the Cedarburg Invite, and conference is this, is next week Saturday.
Our football team, as many of you might know-
Yes.
-has improved greatly.
Yes, I know.
One of our very, like, proud, I'm so proud of our win against Arrowhead especially, because no one beat Arrowhead.
Oh, so are we.
But, yeah, and I would just like to say that West and South didn't beat Arrowhead, but we did, so, yeah. And no matter how our last game against CMH goes, we will have an above-500 record, which is really good, and I don't even, we weren't in high school the last time that that happened, so, yeah.
A dance went to a camp this summer, and they did two performances at the pep rally. One was hip-hop, and one was, one involved the staff with five teachers and Miss Newcomer or principal, and they also perform at halftime at all the football games.
Cool.
So, our homecoming dance this year was last Saturday, no, two Saturdays ago, and the theme was dancing through the decades, so it was all decades theme, all, our hallway was 90s, and these were our shirts for that, as the friends, and on the back it says, "Only 90s Kids Will Remember," since we're the last class to go through the 90s, to have everyone born in the 90s, and there were over 600 tickets sold to the dance, and that's huge, because we never got, we never had that. And the king and queen were Ben Loveland and Sarah- king and queen were Ben Loveland and Sarah Kahler.
And prom last spring, the theme was Anchors Away. It was at the PAC again. It was a lot of fun. And the prom king and queen were...
Was Annabedlov.
And Jared Estes.
Um, so our pep rally this year, there was a lot of competition between the classes. Um, but ultimately the seniors won. We won hallway for our third year in a row and we won spirit stick for our second year in a row. And that's big at North. Like spirit is huge.
Yes, it is.
Uh, marching band, the show is titled Tiger Lily, based around, um, Peter Pan. And they've taken place at their competitions at Maguannago South and River Falls. And they're hoping to bring back their 10th consecutive state title this weekend.
Um, so our drama department, um, our, our fall show this year is, oh, it's hilarious. It's called the election, which is very appropriate this time. Um, and I'm in it. I play Mark Davenport. And it's a, it's just like a farce on the election system in America. It's super funny, very slapstick. Um, and the show dates are the 17th through the 20th at seven o'clock and the 21st at two o'clock.
The club, a volunteer organization at North is a hu, we have had a huge turnout this year. And our next big event is on Halloween where we're going to be collecting canned goods for the food pantry instead of regular trick or treat.
So last year, our yearbook did really well. This was our yearbook. And our theme was you are here, obviously. And so, hey, we got inducted into the, the gallery of excellence for this book. And it's five schools from, um, the suburbs of Milwaukee and northern Illinois. And our book got featured and it's getting sent all around that area to, um, as a, like, as a guideline for good books. So we're really proud of that. And because of that award, our, um, yearbook will be in all color this year. And we haven't had that in a super long time. And our theme is make every day count. So it's gonna do with a lot of numbers and statistics and stuff.
Last school year on May 23rd, we had a service learning day in which various clubs and other students throughout the school volunteered around the community. So the, like, for example, Key Club volunteered at Summit View, I believe. And we, like, helped them multitrail in the backyard so that science classes could use it for outdoor activities.
So the Goodwill Fall Hall is back. And our goal is to win either first or second this year because last year we won second. And because we won second, we got a $500 gift card that we used for our Sparky Fund and to purchase some materials for the Community Service Day. So we're really hoping that we get second place again. And if you guys want to donate anything to Goodwill, just throw North's name in there for some added numbers. That would be awesome.
And last but definitely not least, for the North School Improvement Plan, we have more of a focus on the ninth grade class with the idea of building a stronger foundation in students so that good habits will continue all four years of high school. And we're also set on becoming an avid schoolwide and will become, and will begin recruitment for next year's avid course, elective course in December.
So that's all we have for you guys tonight. Thank you guys for letting us speak and have a good rest of your week.
Does, does anyone have any questions? Mr. O'Brien?
I just wanna, you know, you mentioned beating Arrowhead. And, uh, many years ago, when West first beat Arrowhead, they also won the state championship that year. And West was more proud of beating Arrowhead than winning the state championship. So I would say that that's quite an accomplishment. But I would also challenge, uh, um, North to, uh, um, be the team that beats Catholic Memorial. And then that would make you the citywide champion, uh, which I think is, would be phenomenal. So, and it'd be wonderful. So, right, Mr. McCaffrey?
No, I agree 100%.
Mrs. Brzink.
Just thank you for your enthusiasm. We love to see kids who are proud of their school. And you've shared so many wonderful things that you're doing. Thank you so much. That's what makes the school great, people like you.
Thank you.
We love being here to brag about what we get to do.
Yeah.
Ms. Madden.
If I have things to donate to Goodwill, what do I tell them?
Um, so when you donate to Goodwill, you just, um, if you're gonna donate for the Goodwill Fall Hall, um, just say which school you're, you're gonna do the proceeds for. Cause last year we just lost to Mesquiko and then they got a concert by Tori Kelly and we were super jealous.
Is that going on now?
Um, I think it's gonna start, it's starting very soon. I, I think it's in November.
Okay.
That starts. Yeah. And if you guys could just throw North's name in there, get us a few action numbers, that'd be awesome.
Kids.
Well, well, you guys can't see this during your presentation, but your principal, Mrs. Newcomer's in the background and she's smiling the whole time. Why? Because your school spirit shows through, through the whole report. Thank you so much for your report. Look forward to seeing you again this year.
Thank you so much.
Uh, moving on, uh, now we, uh, take an opportunity to listen to our citizens. And as past practice, we will limit that time to three minutes, uh, for each speaker. Uh, Mrs. Brzink, at the thirty, uh, two and a half minute mark, we'll give you a signal to let you know that there's 30 seconds of time left to wrap up your comments. Uh, we expect all speakers to, uh, honor our time limit, to refrain from any inappropriate language in any manner and to be respectful in their comments. Uh, speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. Uh, we also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain, uh, by responding with any verbal comments, cheering, applause, or behavior that will, uh, detract from the meeting. And also to, um, uh, respect our speakers and participants, uh, please silence your phones at this time. And we do have one person signed up, uh, Mr. Paul Reese.
One interesting note about greenhouses is Israel feeds its nation about four to five crops through its greenhouses throughout that country. They use hydroponics and the five crops a year through... Red basket of the Middle East. You know, for the last few months, I've been talking about the loss of, of our principals in, in this district, not all, some. And it was relieving to hear Todd Gray say that there has been a problem some places. At least he's been the only one brave enough to admit that. Um, my hangup with it is that we keep hiring people from outside of this district. You know, um, Mr. O'Brien brought up that a lot of times in even private business, there's a lot of turnover. Companies years ago used to get away from that and found a way to get away from that, having lots of turnover, was to hire from within. They promoted within. Quad graphics is big on that. They promote within. My company, my foreman is been there about 30 years. And, um, he is at least 10 years younger than me. His job out of high school. He came up and was brought up through that company and started right out of high school and has been there ever since. It's one way that companies found to avoid high turnover was to promote from within. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm not saying that everyone's running away and this is a terrible place to work. That's not my point at all here. Um, another thing is I was at this, we used to be the CNI meeting last week, I believe it was. And, um, there was a presentation made and they show on the board how we used to teach through reading, math, blah, blah, blah. Now it's all about, um, problem solving. And it was a very dark contrast between the two. One is a black and white picture of a stale classroom and one is kids standing in front of a science lab doing things. I take offense to that is the fact that, that those people were problem solvers as well. We just changed the way we're gonna do this. But I, I just don't like that, that they weren't problem solvers. I'll use the SR-71 Blackbird, yeah, anyways, as an example. It, it was built in the 1950s. It holds all the speed records today for manned aircraft. Built out of something called titanium at that time was known as a space age material. Just the figuring out on how to machine it was incredible, what they had to do. The coolant and that, they had to come up with to do this. Uh, these guys were problem solvers to the core. They were problem solvers. The, the Apollo 13 space mission, what happened there, just to build that rocket.
30 seconds.
Was just an incredible feat of engineering. And to say that we're now going into problem solving and is almost saying like they weren't problem solvers. Those guys were geniuses. They were just geniuses what we have today. Sus, you know, everything from the suspension bridge on, you know, these were problems solved. And I, I get the fact, and I'm not trying to, to diminish this, but I'm also worried that we're changing education so much and yet we're changing how we score the SATs or the ACT scores are all being changed. We're resetting it. And that, that's scary to some people out there. You know, you're now you're changing, doing all these changes in education and the standard that we have to judge it by is also changing. I mean...
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Board of Education at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our minute approval. There are four sets of minutes before us. The September 14th, 2016, regular board minutes, uh, 2014, or September 14th, 2016, public hearing, October 3rd, 2016, special session expulsion panel, and October 4th, 2016, special meeting and executive session. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mrs. Reincheck. Any discussion? Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Robert Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart. Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye. Uh, passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications, uh, part of our meeting. Dr. Gray, do you have, uh, any communications to report?
No communications this evening.
Okay. Mrs. Brzink, do you have any communications from the Waukesha Education Foundation?
I do. Um, I just want you to mark your calendars, if you please. Um, the celebration of excellence will be held on Sunday, February 28th at South High School from three o'clock to six o'clock. There's no football games or basketball games or anything to interfere. We very carefully chose that date. Just want you to know, we're very busy, um, uh, involving all of our schools in Waukesha. Uh, we're, it used to be just, um, we would be featuring the, the teachers, um, that won awards from, uh, the, the foundation. But now we're going to feature besides those people that, um, prepared, uh, courses for grants. Uh, we're going to be featuring every school in the district. So we're really looking forward to a big celebration of excellence that every school will feature what they're doing that's outstanding. So it's, uh, gonna be a really big day, date. So mark your calendars, February 28th, celebration of excellence. Thank you.
Yeah, more comprehensive approach, I think, will be good. So, excellent. Excellent. Yes, Mr. Brz, uh, Baumgart.
Tuesday. Does that sound right?
Tuesday, let's see.
I think it's a Monday.
I said 28th.
26. I think it's the 26th.
You think it's the 26th?
The 28th doesn't sound right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was the 28th.
26th is a Sunday.
Let's see. I, I don't have a calendar for next year.
Well, the 26th. It is a Sunday. It is definitely a Sunday.
It is a Sunday, right.
February 26th. Three, from three till six.
Yes.
Correct? Excellent.
Yes.
Excellent. I know when I go to the eye doctor, that six and that eight up on that little screen, they're, they're the same. So...
Don't brag about that.
No, I know. Anything else, Mrs. Brzink?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Um, moving on to the safety committee report given by Amanda Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The safety committee met this morning, um, at 9:00 AM at the facilities building. The student and employee accident reports were reviewed. Following up an old business, it was recommended by the insurance company not to use the climbing ropes anymore. The safety committee will send out notification to the appropriate parties to suspend use of the ropes as well as remove them altogether within, um, the time that they have decided. Next, we, there was a lengthy discussion regarding the safety of students and the logistical concerns, um, with regards to election days. Um, there are currently eight schools within the district that are polling locations. And, um, Glenn Nordham is, has been in contact, uh, as always with the, um, police department and, and making sure that, um, the students and the staff will be safe on those days. And then lastly, our next meeting will be at the service building on Wednesday, November 9th, 2016 at 9:00 AM. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that.
Joe.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Reincheck.
Thank you. Amanda, did something happen on the climbing ropes?
No, nothing happened. Um, they, it, it was, it was just brought up because only some of the schools have them. And, um, the, the part of the conversation was that the staff, um, on, at the schools are aware, know how to use them properly, what type of matting needs to be underneath them. But there's a concern that at times when outside groups come into the schools, for some reason it might not be locked. There's just, it's a liability that, that they don't want to worry about them anymore. They are not needed for the presidential, um, physical testing. There are other means of, of using those skills that they could get from the rope. So they decided to, to remove them.
These are all outdoor ropes or are they also indoor? Both? Okay.
The indoor ones.
Okay.
And they're getting old too, so.
Yep. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Roddy. Uh, moving on to our charter school, uh, and charter, school and program report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Very good, Joe. Uh, just a couple of items to share with you tonight. As I mentioned, when Joe, Jenna was here, we have some gems in our district that we sometimes forget about. And, and, uh, I'm gonna mention the planetarium tonight. Uh, bumped into Dave Deremer a couple of weeks back and we got to talking. And, uh, I thought, jeez, it's about time we heard from them. And there's some, uh, data he sent me that I think is, is, uh, interesting to you, will be interesting to you. Uh, the presentations the planetarium does divided up into three groups here. Uh, the school district of Waukesha, student field trips. We've had an attendance averaging about 6,000 students a year go through the planetarium. Uh, non-district schools that visit our planetarium, it provides about 3,800 students per year. The public and private groups, uh, that go on their own to various performances, about 5,200 per year. So during the course of a year, Dave puts on about 400 presentations. And, uh, total attendance over the course of a year is about 15,000 visitors. So there, there is a tremendous use of that facility. And, um, it, it's really one of those gems. Side issue, I'm just, I'm just gonna let you know this is coming. The equipment is beginning to wear old. And, and Dave was, Dave was twisting my arm already when we, when I got there. But it's, it's important that we think about that because it is a highly used and very proud thing.
And when we bought that equipment, Mr. Baumgart, it was used. So it was used at the time.
And I forgot what year that was. It's in another document that he gave me, but it's getting up there.
Probably like 10 years.
Uh, the planetarium participates in five major events, uh, that are held at Redsour's Nature Center. And that is the apple harvest, which took place about a month ago. The Hal Halloween, uh, which will be this Friday, the Janbury in January, Wild Winter Night in February, and Earth Day in April. So it's, again, it's, it's, it's an important thing to remember that it's there and it's ours. And we have a wonderful, uh, partnership with the community on that. So that's one, one item. Another item I wanted to share with you was, uh, heard from, excuse me, I heard from Jeff Peterson over at Summit View, which is in the initial stages of magnet, capital letters, Magnet Schools of America. Uh, the first national certification program for magnet schools. And Magnet Schools of America Standards of Excellence Certification Program is designed to recognize the nation's most exemplary magnet schools and help them as they continue to grow and provide, uh, high quality, innovative curriculum and programs. Uh, so I guess the important thing is you realize, for you to realize that this program is, is advancing, moving ahead and growing. And Jeff is paying very close attention to what's available, uh, out there. A few other things, uh, just for you to know, uh, there's more details on both of these will be in your packet on Friday. Plus I've received some information from the Health Academy, the Engineering Academy, and the STEM Academy. The, excuse me, again, two, things that will be in your packet on Friday. So that's, uh, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Appreciate that. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, did we have any, uh, public gifts to report on?
Yeah, there's, uh, three gifts tonight. Uh, a total of $2,000 was donated to Les Paul Middle School by Paul and Kathleen O'Man. This gift will be used to integrate technology, science, and math into classrooms. Uh, the second gift, a total of 2,000 was donated, donated to Les Paul Middle School by Northwestern Mutual and Matching Funds of Paul and Kathleen O'Man. And the last gift, a car with an estimated value of $4,535 was donated to South High School by Sandra Randall. This gift will be used for work in the auto shop classrooms.
Nice gifts. Always nice gifts. And we thank those people for their generosity. Um, and your agenda this evening includes, uh, a number of categories for approval. Uh, if any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity in, in a short time. Included in the items, uh, for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on October 3rd, 2016. you will have that opportunity in, in a short time. Included in the items, uh, for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on October third, twenty sixteen. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with the meeting, um, minutes under item number one G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, uh, we have scheduled an executive session, uh, at the end of this meeting tonight, um, at the end of the open meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. Uh, is there any board member that wishes to set aside any item for a separate consideration at this time? Okay, seeing none, Pat Madden, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of one retirement, one leave of absence, and three new or modified contracts. This is in addition to the five new or modified contracts approved at the Human Resources Committee meeting on October fifth. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzink. Any discussion? Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. It passes nine zero, Sue. Uh, moving on to the Superintendent's Report, given by Dr. Gray.
Thank you. A little over a week and a half ago, uh, somewhere after midnight, I got a call from Joe Cook saying, uh, we need to, um, get West ready the next day for, uh, Command Center for the, for the Waukesha Police Department, in search for the young boy that, uh, had, had been lost in the, in the west area neighborhood. Um, Joe, I think, stayed up the whole night, making sure that was ready. Ryan Pat, principal, uh, was, was also on, on hand very, very early, getting things ready, as well as a number of the West staff. Um, it was really, very impressive to see the, uh, there had to be well over five hundred volunteers that came through West alone, and there were others that were, were already out in the field, but, um, they came away, as far away as from Sheboygan, Oak Creek, I mean, a lot of different, uh, uh, fire personnel were there from, from all over southeastern Wisconsin, but, um, I think Joe did an excellent job in making sure that everything was ready to go, and, uh, when I got there at six AM, which was the start of the volunteer, I mean, everything was all set up, done, um, the, the police could immediately start, uh, processing volunteers. So, uh, fortunately, it turned out very, very well. Sometimes these things don't, but it was a, it was a, a, a good day in the end, so. Thanks to all those. Thanks, thanks to the many volunteers who showed up. Um, we had two, two of our, uh, West High School students who didn't find them, but I think, you know, the credit really goes to all the, all the people who volunteered, because, um, in any one of those people could have, uh, found the young man, and, and it turned out well, so.
Just, just out of curiosity, uh, Mr. Cook, just wondering if our, uh, Safety and Crisis Plan came in to play here? I mean, um, it covers, I know, a lot of things. Does it cover this kind of situation, too?
The, I think that the, the process that we used to develop, but the coordination that we had with, um, police, fire, the Sheriff's Department, allowed us to begin those connections with the right contacts there, so, um, they know who to reach out to in the district, and consequently, then I know who to reach out to when, when these events happen. So the communication protocol in and around this, uh, was very beneficial.
Excellent. Excellent. Always good to be prepared, be ready. You never know when these things are gonna come about, and, you know, it just shows how wonderful this community is, truly cares. Um, it's a great place to live. I truly feel blessed, and I think we all feel blessed, of living in this community and, and, uh, helping one another out, so.
Right. Yeah. I, I thought there might have been a concern from some, you know, with the number of people coming into, uh, a school building during the day, but given the total number of law enforcement agencies on hand at West, it was probably the safest place in the whole city, so.
And a great result.
And both the County Sheriff's Office and the, and the, uh, Waukesha Police did a great job in, in managing things.
Right.
On your desk are some enrollments. I need to correct an error, that the twenty-one down at the bottom right-hand, that should have brackets around it. Um, earlier in the year, we thought we might be up students, but actually, we, we had, as we do when we have, uh, students in, 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 uh, similar programs, we tend to double count. Those, those double countings have been, um, changed, removed, and we are down twenty-one, which I think is, is pretty good, given the fact that all the competition out there with, with charters, vouchers, and so on. Um, so this is, the, the thirteen, one, one, seven are the number of students we are actually, um, educating this year. The, the second page of that is the, is the, um, kind of a graphical description of the enrollments by grade. Um, the only problem here is that, that trend is going the wrong way. Uh, when you see these kind of things, either you wanna see a, a kind of a, uh, uh, there is reversible bell shape, or you want that, that trend going from, uh, the, the upper left-hand side down to the, towards the bottom right-hand side. But, um, it is what it is, and as we know, enrollment trends tend to change, uh, from year to year. The, the number of students open and roll out is still steady. I mean, that number hasn't changed, um, over the years, so, um, it's just a matter of, 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 uh, fewer students that are in our district. But, as you know, in two or three years, that could, that could have a change. Those, those things tend to change. Uh, two, three years ago, this graph did look much different. Uh, we saw, uh, probably some lower numbers down in the, uh, the, the first, second, third grade. Now it's, it's, those are up, but again, um, they are lagging the, the high school years, so, you know, the expectation is, if things don't change, we could see less students. One of the things that does happen often is, um, uh, people with, uh, students in, in parochial, or private schools in K five, tend to maybe put those students in middle school, which is one of the reasons for the jump, and then again, from eighth grade to high school. So we do see some, some changes there. Um, so it, it's not that we're gonna, in, in a few years, drop down to eight hundred kids per grade. We could end up still, um, in, in the thousand range, thousand, uh, student per range. And finally, um, discussion on the elections, I know they had at the Safety Committee, um, our, our schools, many of our schools are the only public building we have in certain areas of the town, and I, and, you know, even though we, we've talked to the city, it's not something that I want them to, I, I just think it would be a little bit unpatriotic to say.
That's right.
Go away. Um, so what we do is, we, uh, we put a number of security personnel in those schools, um, that, that are able to keep, um, the election area separate from the rest of the school. Uh, these are trained personnel, they do a great job. Uh, the police tend to step up patrols in those area, in the, in the, especially in the elementary school areas. Of course, our high schools have SROs on hand, and so I feel it's very safe. I know two years ago, uh, uh, we had a, a medical emergency at one of our, uh, elementary election sites, and the security personnel was also trained, um, to, to deal with those kind of things, and literally, uh, saved the person's life. So, uh, it, we, we do have a good situation. We're able to separate, um, students from, from the election area, and we're also able to make sure that we have the appropriate security people in place as well. So, um, we're always gonna continue to look at, at different ways to make sure that, that our security is, is, uh, very strong on those days, but that's, that's the plan in place now. Um, if there are other situations where there are other public buildings, um, in the area, we can, we can work with the city. But again, if you look at where our polling places are, those are really the only, um, areas in the, in the city that would be, have it a public access.
That's right.
And I think, you know, we've had a great partnership with the city, and we just have to somehow, if, if there is a security concern, have to figure out how to make it work for all involved. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gray. Um, moving on to our, uh, committee reports, where all the heavy lifting is, does occur. We're gonna start this month with, um, the Human Resource Committee. That's presented by, uh, Ms. Pat Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one discussion item, which is the two thousand seventeen eighteen school calendar draft discussion. Each year at this time, we de- develop a school calendar for the following school year. This is the first review of the school calendar. The committee and the board will be asked to approve the final two thousand seventeen eighteen calendar at the November meetings. Principals received a calendar draft this week, and the Board of Education received a draft in the packet on September thirtieth. Staff received a draft on September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, at the monthly Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Professional Staff. The Superintendent's Advisory Committee parents received the draft on September twenty-sixth and offered feedback as well. Following this process, we anticipate HR Committee and Board approval for the two thousand seventeen eighteen calendar at the November meetings. The calendar follows a similar pattern from previous years. One item for discussion is the one-day school week, September first. The feedback received was mixed with arguments for and against scheduling the first day of school on Friday, September first, versus Tuesday, September fifth. Recall that the state of Wisconsin prohibits school earlier than September first. In the past, when September first fell on a Friday, from two oh one and two oh six, seven, we did start school on that Friday, September first. Included in your packets were drafts for a September first start date and a September fifth start date. The Human Resources Committee, at its meeting on October fifth, preferred a September fifth, two thousand seventeen, start date. These drafts are for information and feedback only. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
This is a discussion item, so is there any comments or question? Mr. O'Brien?
Um, not on this one. I was gonna ask something else, but we're not getting off topic yet. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Baumgart?
I, I tend to agree with the, the fifth as a possibility, but I'm wondering if we did, those couple years where we had the September first on a Friday start dates, did we have any records of the attendance on those days?
They're looking those up.
They are looking.
We did ask that at, at HR, and they are looking those up.
Okay.
So when we meet again.
We'll have that.
Yes.
It's been about sixty, forty for September first, and that's looking at the, the, my parent advisory group, uh, teachers, or, or buildings have, have, uh, uh, let Chris know what their staff is kind of in favor of. So, right now, it's sixty, forty for September first, um, with the thought being that, uh, students could get in, get their books, get whatever they need, lockers, um, and then on September fifth, hit the ground running. Uh, keep in mind, we, we are at a big disadvantage to, uh, non-public schools in terms of the AP exams and the ACT exams. Those are given, um, in, in March and, and, uh, May respectively, and, uh, schools that are able to start earlier do have, uh, uh, an advantage, um, in, in the curriculum for the AP courses. So, um, I'm, I'm hoping, again, the legislature will resurrect the, uh, if you have twenty percent of your, or more of your kids taking AP exams, that, that we can get a little bit earlier start date, especially when we hit a situation like this.
Yeah, one of the things that I was looking at with this is, what day in June do the students end? And I know there's variations of days in there, um, for professional development and things like that, but we're, we're, in either case, we would be, the last day for the students would be June eighth.
Right. Right. Yeah, we would just, I mean, the, the one day in September, even though you're starting on the first, um, you, you still have three non-contract days in between the, the first and the fifth, so that doesn't save you a lot at the end of the year, but, um, I, I think it's just the thought that September first could be the day that, that, um, like I said, books, lockers, those, those logistical things that kind of, um, take time on that first day could be done, and then.
Sure.
Um, any, any scheduling changes, uh, things that need to be taken care of could potentially be done, um, that, later that afternoon, or maybe even over the weekend.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Reinacek?
Just have a question about Easter break, spring break. Um, I know you guys put a lot of thought into all of this. I'm just wondering, again, I had a question from, uh, a parent of a student, or a few students, that is a teacher in McQuanigle, and they always tried to have their spring break together so they can go away.
Yeah.
And this year, we're opposite again, and so I'm just wondering, how do we choose that?
How do we choose that? Uh, once again, I'll go back to my parent group, and we polled them, and I think there was, um, a heavy majority, um, that said, when, when Easter is late, that spring break ends on the Easter weekend, with that Monday off, so it would be Monday to Monday. If, if Easter is early, then Easter would begin the spring break with, with Good Friday off, and then coming back on the next Monday. So that's, that's kind of been the, uh, the, the wish of the parents, and, uh, so we've, we've pretty much stuck with that, unless there's some extenuating circumstances.
A great teacher, so I told him, I think you just have to come work for Waukesha, and then you'll always be on the same schedule.
Exactly. There you go. Good answer.
Any other discussion?
I'll take those notes back to committee.
Okay, Ms. Madden. Anything else that you have? Oh, Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to, and the HR report, and, uh, and the staffing that we brought up, you know, new staff, it seems like a lot of it's E-Achieve, and I was just wondering if you could come on, comment on that, Mr. Gray, as far as the increased cost for E-Achieve.
You know what? I don't, I don't have the numbers, but we are, we, we do have a significant increase in, in, uh, nine through twelve students for, um, E-Achieve this year, and, as well as some of the, the lower grades, but, uh, we, we do, we do have a significant increase there. And I, I, I'll, I could bring those details, um, at the next board meeting.
So that's the resulting, I mean, almost all the staffing cost changes are relative to E-Achieve, what I've seen in this particular month, is that correct?
Right. We, we typically staff between forty-five and fifty-two-one. I mean, that's where it starts. It doesn't always land that way at the end, but that's kind of where we, we start, and, um, so in order to add a teaching staff, uh, we, we, it's a significant number of new enrollees.
Okay. Thank you. I just.
Can that conclude your report, Ms. Madden?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, but we're gonna roll right into the Compensation Committee, uh, and that's also given by you.
Thank you. The Compensation Committee met on Monday evening to review the proposed revisions to the teacher's strategic compensation plan. Suggested revisions were in your packet. The committee asked questions and recommended changes to clarify lane advancement to teachers that are on the bachelor's lane, step sixteen, and have earned a master's degree. Rather than moving the employees to the highest step on the master's column, which would be one M, step nine, the Compensation Committee recommends advancing them in column one M in relation to the highest step in their bachelor's column. This is an information discussion item, and no action will be taken at this meeting. The Teacher and Administration Compensation Committee will be apprised of this change, and a handbook change will be recommended for an approval at a later meeting. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Any discussion or comments on, on this, this time? Mr. O'Brien?
Just, uh, for those board members who aren't on the Compensation Committee, one of the things we're very vigilant about is acceleration of our employee cost, and the suggestion that we made as far as what was proposed originally by administration was addressing potential acceleration of employment cost, because we're trying to make sure we manage that, so we don't get, get caught in a bind that we had eight or nine years ago, so, okay?
Important part of the discussion. Anything else? Very, thank you, Ms. Madden. Moving on to the Policy Committee, and that's given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes. I have no action items tonight, but I do have three information items, they're all Districts and school administrators, along with members of the Board and administrative assistants from the staff, worked collaboratively, yeah, right, collaboratively to review current district policies, provided NEOLAs policy templates, and create draft policies that will be presented to committee and the full Board for consideration, revision, and eventual approval. In total, 16 administrators, five Board members, and three executive assistants attended six day-long work sessions to draft policies for the, for, for 10 different policy series. We thank those who are able to participate for those sessions.
Just, just a quick comment on that, Mr. Bungar. Lot of sweat went into that. Joe headed that up. Thank you, thank you, Joe, on that. I know, and we should thank everybody else as you just have. And I can say I was at a few of those sessions. We stayed till the work was done.
Mm-hmm.
And some of those sessions went really long.
I see.
And were longer than an average workday. So, tremendous amount of work that went into it.
It was an intense process, yes. Next, on the NEOLAs presentation. At the September 20th Policy Committee meeting, Richard Zimmern, who was our consultant through this whole process, was present to discuss the process that was used during the Waukesha drafting sessions. Richard presented several policies from the current Waukesha, from the current Waukesha policy to the NEOLAs template that was referenced during the drafting work to the final draft policy that will be presented to the Policy Committee and the full Board in an upcoming time. Richard answered questions from the committee members on the uniqueness of our proposed draft policies, the level of legal compliance, and this is a critical issue, that our proposed policies are at, and the overall thoroughness of our policies. Richard was impressed by both the administrative involvement, the participation of Board members in the drafting work, and the level of attention that was given to the draft policies. He commented that it was unique to have Board members involved in the drafting and that it was beneficial to our discussions. That comment is a little bit surprising to me, because if you think about what, one of the primary responsibilities of a Board of Education is, it's policy.
Right, right.
And I think we took it seriously as a Board. I, I feel very positive about that. Third item, administrative and committee discussion in the NEOLAs process. We had Assistant Superintendents Chris Hedstrom, Derek Clark, and Jody Landish, along with Secondary Director of Special Education Jason Gahan, participated in a discussion around the NEOLAs drafting process, their impressions of the level of attention given to each policy, and their level of comfort with what is being proposed to the committee as draft policies. Policy Committee members had the opportunity to get specific administrative feedback on the policies, and were able to ask further clarifying questions of Mr. Neiman, Zimmern, excuse me, and of Joe and other committee members. So, all in all, it's been a very thorough process up to this point, and we will be getting, the next step on this will be the next Policy Committee meeting, which is October 24th. We have a budget meeting that night as well, and NEOLAs Board work session following those meetings, so that we can kind of let you see what's going on with, with the work that's been done. Joe, I think we're still looking at an approval process date, maybe in January, February?
It would be nice to have a January, February approval timeline, and then couple that then with work on administrative guidelines to support the policies.
All in all, we looked at about 400 policies. And that's, that's a lot of stuff. And now, remember, this was reviewing the policies, it was more of an audit. We did not write a lot of new policies for you to be worrying about. So, if you're panicking, thinking behind the scenes, there's a lot of policies been created, no, that's not the case.
There were a few.
There've been some issues, yes. There've been some issues where there were legal considerations that were not properly addressed, and maybe that's the wrong word, entirely addressed in the, in the current series, and have been brought up to compliance with, with the law, and you will be identified as to which those are. So, there's, it's all above board. Do you have something more?
Yes, and I, just, just to add to that, there was a tremendous amount of work on some policies unique to Waukesha, and one that I probably will never forget is the conversation we had around field trips, which was about two and a half hours of attention given to our field trip policy, which does, for those who are on the Teaching and Learning Committee, as you approve overnight field trips, the policy will now completely address the type of field trip, what's the, the Board is requiring, what the committee is requiring, and what we need an advisor to do. So, it's very, very thorough.
And I think just some of the, some of the new ones were in relation to some, some of the federal regulations that have come out that are just brand new. So, we didn't even have much of a chance to react to that, correct, Bill?
That's correct, and, and actually, that is one of the ongoing benefit in doing what we've done with NEOLAs, working with them, is we will be much more time-conscious of federal changes that need to be applied to the policies, rather than working through that ourselves. We will be having the help of NEOLAs that, you know, make sure you get this in your policies, because this is new. So, they do that work for us.
And WASB used to notify us that there were changes, but we still had to do all the legwork.
Right.
You know, Joe and, and his team would have to, you know.
Well, they didn't advise us on all, just certain things, and, and we were, it was incumbent on us to figure out what changed. DPI would sometimes tell us, but not give us guidance on how to make those changes.
This is a more complete package or approach to it.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep.
So, October, oh.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I'm very confident our Policy Committee will handle this transition well. I do think it is.
You're right.
Yeah, I do think it is unique, our policy manual, as IBS NEOLAs kind of identified in terms of the Board's past role in that. That probably reflects, I think this manual was a big emphasis of Bill Domina when he was on the Board. I think it was, a lot of it was really developed during his early period of time here. And I think that policy manual is probably one of the most important documents we have that, that helps the Board and the district. So, certainly want to make sure we pay attention to what's being changed as we move through that, and I'm sure the committee will do that.
Bungar?
October 24th is a, a day, you know, where we're going to have several different meetings combined, just remember that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to our Technology Committee, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
President, I have no report this evening. However, our next scheduled Technology Committee meeting is Wednesday, October 19th, which is next Wednesday, at 6:00 PM in room 109. So, anybody who wants to join us is more than welcome.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Well, some great news. There is no action items this evening. Yeah, there's a couple of information items. We have an update on the 2016-2017 budget and tax levy. The committee was updated on the current estimates for the 2016-2017 tax levy, which is scheduled for approval at the October 24th Board Meeting. The preliminary budget was based on a projected tax rate of $9.10. The current estimate for the final budget tax rate is $8.82. On October 15th, the Department of Public Instruction will provide the District of Certified Equalization Aid and voucher program participation levels, which will allow the business office to calculate the final tax levy and rate. Due to the timing of the certified information from the DPI, the final budget and tax levy will be brought before, brought to the Board on October 24th. The final 2016-17 budget will be in full compliance of state imposed revenue limits. I also want to bring it to attention, one of the things that we're looking into the budget is adding a fourth school resource officer. There'll be more discussions on that, but the fourth school resource officer will be, other than the three that we have at our current high schools, and we'll have more information on that later. And there'll be an additional cost on the budget relative to that if we approve it. The second item was the monthly budget report. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of September. $7,7478 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $10,808,169, $808,169 was expended during the month. There was no revenue reported in the special education revenue, and $2,125,996 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in other areas. Going back to the levy approval, we will not have a chance as a committee to review that prior to the next full Board meeting. So, what will happen is you'll get, or the meeting when we have this review on October 24th. You will be given that information in your Friday packet, so I ask each Board members to look at that closely, because we will, as a committee, the FNF Committee will not be reviewing it. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Just a quick comment. Most of what you've seen, though, I mean, this budget process has taken us months. You've seen virtually everything. It's just a few little tweaks that will be presented in your Friday packet prior to the 24th. So, just the final little touches. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Appreciate that. Moving on to our Teaching and Learning Committee, presented by Mrs. Barbara Bezink.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one information item and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for Teaching and Learning this evening. First information item relates to a 4K update. At last week's meeting, the Teaching and Learning Committee heard from Laura Faust, the district's 4K coordinator, who provided information about our increased 4K enrollment for the 216-217 school year, including a review of the current committee partner model of service for 4K students. She also provided an explanation of the 4K content overview developed by 4K teachers this summer. Examples of the school district of Waukesha's developmental learning continuums for literacy, math, and social emotional growth were also shared with the Board to include 4K learning targets and an overview of play workshop as it is being implemented at all 4K sites. And of course, you know, that one word excites me. What is the word?
Playtime.
Playtime. Yes. And, you know, Laura's just been an outstanding leader, and she is leading all the K-4 and K-5 people in reviewing a book about, about proper play, and there'll be some discussions that will follow. So, perhaps, so we could include that in the Friday newsletters when those discussions are being held, and, because they're open to anyone, they're going to be very interesting. The next item is the Student Achievement Update, District ACT Achievement Update. Amy Revo, the district's data communication liaison, was at our meeting to present a summary of the American College Testing ACT Profile Report for the school district of Waukesha's 2016 graduating class. Because the state of Wisconsin now requires all students to take the ACT in 11th grade, this annual report includes results for all juniors for the first time. Amy provided background on ACT reporting and the recommended action plan from ACT for college readiness. Finally, she shared composite scores along with district and state averages.
This is a discussion item. Is there any comments or questions on, on that? Mrs. Reincheck?
Hi, so today, thank you. Today, I had a discussion with a, can't think of the word, a guidance counselor about our daughter's ACTs, and I, I asked her if we are for sure that we give them the choice, because she said you can take it on these certain dates, and you don't want to push it too off too long. Some people like to try to go ahead and get a better score, but they'll take the best score. And I, I remember Amy saying that they, and maybe Joe, that they actually take the second score. It's not the best, they take the second score.
No, I believe it's the best. Now, typically, what happens is that the junior year, I mean, you can take it before your junior year, but it's the best score up until you, you graduate. So, you can take it as a junior. If you don't like your score, you can take it again later your junior year or senior year and so on, and typically, it's the best score. For the, the score that goes into our composite, I, I mean, I'm not sure which score they are going to use for the, for the individual, or the, which one the college has used, but for that final composite, for example, our, our raw data showed a certain score, and by the time that comes out for the graduating, when those juniors are then graduating, that score will go up a little bit, because kids will, other kids will retake it and improve the score. So, typically, the, the raw scores that you, you might see right now for the 2016 junior class will invariably be a little lower than what happens by the time they're seniors. So.
I'll have to watch the tape, because I, I feel like I got mixed around something.
We got, we're talking about two different things going on here, and we need, we need to separate. I think Amy and Karen's point was that an, an individual who takes it again, they will take the most recent score.
Right.
You're talking, you're talking about the.
The district.
The composite for the district.
Right, right.
And maybe they're measuring those differently, because Amy was very specific, in Karen's point, that if a student takes it twice, the second score is the one that gets to the college.
To the college, correct.
You're applying to a college, that's the one they're going to see, so.
Even if it's lower.
Even if it's lower.
That's right.
Yeah, I see what you, I thought you meant, i- as part of our composite score.
Even if it's lower.
Now, now, fortunately, you know, a high majority of the time, that score is better the second time. But not always.
Mrs. Reincheck?
Thank you. So, this, the guidance counselor is Mrs. Marazzo. She said that, that the panel came in last year, I believe it was at West, and every single school said, "Yes, we take the better score. Yes, we take the better score." So, we need to have better communication on that, because.
Right. Got to clean that up.
Some feedback for you?
Yep, thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bezink. Appreciate that. We're at the end of our committee reports. Are there any recommendations for any future items to be added to Board meetings or committee meetings? Any suggestions?
Not yet.
If you think of anything in the meantime, just call up the appropriate committee chair and.
Can I say something?
Have that discussion, yes. Mrs. Bezink?
I'd like to thank Karen Reincheck for decorating our desks this evening with her homegrown flowers. They're absolutely perfectly beautiful. It was very thoughtful of you, and I'm just amazed at the size of these beautiful flowers. You've got to be a good gardener.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brightens up our day, our evening. Thank you. Seeing we do not have a need for executive session, we stand adjourned.